Okay, we're ready to call this meeting to order. Everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, and the faithful and the routine justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, if you could do the roll.
Ms. Olbray?
Here.
Ms. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Strobel?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
All present.
Okay, um, on Board Docs, we have the procedures for public participation. I don't know if they are. There we go. For the assembled public. And if we, um, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items for the special voting meeting? Okay. If, uh, okay, so, um, on the special voting meeting, we have a one personnel item, personnel item 2A11. Do I have a motion for that?
Hi.
Thank you. Oh, and second, um, any discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, um, or did I not hear none? Do we have any discussion? Okay, um, Mr. Scott.
Okay, this is, uh, special voting. You said 1-1 or is this number 1?
2A11. It's the only one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Olbray?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any, uh, presentations by the public on issues? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
And a second? Um, okay. Meeting's adjourned. Uh, Beth. Okay, and so now we're gonna be moving on to the main event, the, um, the, yeah, the committee of the whole. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um, we, we just did the pledge allegiance, we will forego doing it a second time, but we do need to do a roll. Again, I'm sorry. For the committee of the whole.
No, I just got my sheet. All right, all right.
We won't be doing any voting on that one, so.
Yeah, here we go. Okay. Uh, Mrs. Olbray?
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Gottfried?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mrs. Strobel, here. Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here. Thank you. Okay, um, I, for under announcements, I do not have any, um, agenda edits, any that we need to deal with right now. Mr. Dr. Cooper? Agenda edits?
Do not have.
Not, okay. Um, I do wanna make an announcement that there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and negotiations. And, uh, now I'll turn it over to Dr. Cooper for their superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This snapshot we went over last Thursday, the board met and updated the athletics and activities, health and safety plan at the special meeting on the 8th Thursday of last week. Go to implement changes based on administration and recommendations related to cover its updated guidance. Brief discussion on that in our extracurricular meeting earlier this evening. Also, wanted to share that the professional staff continue to grow with their use of our logic check devices, deliver instructions for digital learners while at the same time delivering that instruction that a person learns in their classrooms. And, um, having the opportunity to go around various buildings in the districts seems very creative. Classes set up allow for those management participation of our learners to go home as they engage with students during the course. So, um, it's interesting to see the progression of that as we progress through the course of this school year over the past seven weeks and see how that is morphing. Also, last week, I found very enjoyable, I visited the primary center for their walking school day, was able to, um, interact with students as they spent about 20 consecutive minutes walking around the outside of the campus to music and dancing. And, um, I could not get the song Baby Shark out of my mind for the rest of the day. But it was fun, um, interacting and dancing with little ones. I thoroughly knew with that. Also, happy to participate in crowning the Hong Kong King Queen, which was an event that was recorded in high school in order to parents support live and live streams for our student population. Wanted to give a special thank you to our high school, high school Mr. Palmer, for his continued support of the live stream that he's been doing and making sure that they have a member of our community. And one other item I wanted to share, the latest data that came out today, released today, um, under the new COVID cases, or district-specific COVID cases across the county and our positivity rate in our Denumaner School District, I'm happy to say is the lowest of any county school, 3.88%. And that was stated yesterday with a weight of 1.23 per hundred thousand, again, lowest of any state county school. So, I think that goes as a compliment to our learning community for continuing mitigation efforts and we're thankful for everybody doing their parts so that our students can continue to come to school and, um, participate in learning opportunities they chose as well as our extracurricular activities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay. Moving on to, um, items up for discussion, um, under finance. Um, the only thing we have there is course, um, course and credit approvals. Is there anything, anybody saw of concern as I say that? I don't know. Yeah. So, so, no, nothing of concern because it's not listed. I think I, I believe I asked, um, and I was told that it would be attached before the, the meeting when we vote on it. So, um, never mind. So, moving on to programs. We have an MOU with Wilks University. Does anybody have any comments, concerns on that? As we can all, yeah, go, go ahead.
I assume that we have other MOUs with other universities? Is this adding one? I'm sorry. We have other MOUs with other universities? Is this the issue of Wilks or is this the first one?
Uh, this is the first one for this year's.
Okay. Oh, I'm supposed to be offering public comment after everyone? And I'm sorry, because I keep forgetting, because there's nobody here. But, um, if there's anybody who has public comment on either finance or programs? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to secretary's correspondence, Mr. Scott?
Uh, I really have nothing to report, um, this time.
We, we did have some.
I mean, we had some correspondence.
We had some correspondence from parents who were hoping that we would, um, update, um, our attendance policy and, um, you know. Yeah, we, that has petered off since we updated our attendance policy for the, for the athletics. Any, nothing else?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, so moving on to BCIU board report, Mr. Miller?
Uh, yes, so there was a virtual meeting in September, mostly procedural, where two new members added, supervisor and reading, that new board members added. There was a agreement ratified with the Discovery Education Services for streaming videos on half all county schools. So, this was for us. That was really it for the meeting. There's also a legislative report that came out as well. One of the interesting items was the Senate bill that was passed at 50-0 for required for school districts to have a one-month silence for 9/11 and will be expanded to other potential holidays like Prop 12 and other events that are expected to be passed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on to, uh, report for BCTC board, Mr. Scott?
Yes, um, we had that meeting back on September 23rd. It was a virtual meeting, very simply, as we discussed before this, but, uh, just general housekeeping, there was a bunch of policies we had discussed, um, and expenses and expenditures that they are going through right now. Very simply, it was just general housekeeping.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Um, now I'm gonna hand it over to our, um, senior student board representative, Ms. Sweet.
So, we did just the high school this time. And the high school's up and running with the new COVID-19 seasons. Student uncle and school are happy to be back and working together to work, they're working together towards another way here. On Saturday, October 2nd, we took local question, made 47-0 in the annual playoff game. The game consists of the senior girls playing fight, flight, and fall with the senior guys being cheerleaders. On top of that, on October 8th, in the classroom, long vows for crowd, hope to maintain in the league. Yeah, even high school, the only school in county doing anything for homecoming, so we're very proud of that. All souls learn full swing with some souls to scope his tennis all began. Ways of meeting and selling the ice cream with his little friends performs all. This half of this week, a secretary is not allowed just yet. Although, students will put in a year, most students are thankful for what's happened, happening as things are trying to be known as they could be. This year, we had a new junior representative, which is Jayda.
Hi, um, my name is Jayda Muskauski, and I'm the junior class president. And with that, I'd like to be as involved as possible in my class and school. So, I'm glad to be up here.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, we're very excited to start this process again. And we're gonna be doing different presentations and actually interviewing most students in the school, to try and know what they're actually feeling and see what they wanna do in terms of folks on what hasn't happened in this situation. So, thank you for this opportunity again for me, and we're very excited to start.
Thank you, Ms. Sweet. Does anybody have, um, any, um, general questions for our board representatives from the high school before we move on? I am glad that we're still able to have you guys come here even in, uh, even masked and sitting at your own desks. We'll, we'll get something a little bit more permanent starting next time you come. Thank you. Um, Mr., Mr. Strobel, do you have legislative report?
I do not, except for the next, um, I do not, the next meeting is November 10.
10.
Okay. All right, thank you. Under other reports, um, anybody else have something? The only thing I wanted to say is that the Burks, um, in income tax, uh, board, bureau board meets, um, the 29th of this month. We're supposed to be getting another report from them about how collections are going. The last time we met, the, um, the times that they do collections, you know, we hadn't really seen a drop because of when collections occur. We hadn't seen a full quarter of, um, post-COVID changes. So, well, we're expecting to get a report on that by, by the next committee of the whole. Um, anybody else have any other reports, board members? Okay, um, public comment on any of that? Seeing none. Under personnel, we have, um, one resignation, as you can see. I know he's not here, but, um, we'll be voting on Mr. Fleming's resignation at the next board meeting. I could want, I'm going to miss him. I, I think, um, he was a great addition to our team. But, you know, I, I don't know if I could argue with, um, being able to, almost jog to work. So, you know, I, you know, I'm not gonna hold anybody back, but I am gonna miss him. Under retirements, leaves, appointments, any board members have any, any comments, questions, concerns? Any public comment on personnel? And moving on to head count, I don't think it was attached. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll have that next meeting, okay. All right. Okay, curriculum instruction committee, um, report from last meeting. Mr., Mr. McKnight?
We did open the U of L S C on the Discovery Education following the technology that Scott showed reports that we wanted to use for the specific. The specificity of each report. So, we're very encouraged by the early usage report and that the teachers are engaging in. And we, it'll go out in a year, so we're, we believe that stage that's at, I'm actually in that process. Uh, we have Mrs. Holmes here, she spoke to the Discovery Education professional co-board, which is on our instructional coaching partnership. And we've been there, she's very happy, thinking of that. The coach partnership that we have, who is a professional developer from Discovery Ed, considering, I think, been in the district three times this fall, in October, supporting teachers in addition to our instructional coaches. So, we continue to support that investment for today. There was some conversation on the, uh, you know, the scaffold model, record, what we observed in our visitations and as administrators and speaking with principals, also hearing from teachers, what challenges they hit, especially the K-5 level. There was conversation in the last regular meeting about what does the scaffold instructional and content model look like? So, that, that was what we planned, that's happening. There's also continued to be conversation from teachers and, and Mr. Miller, we did a little bit of this, this struggle regarding, you know, more time for teachers, you know, half-day, work-day, based on some of the things that the technical ones, some others. And we didn't come in any conclusions and have conversations on doing something to afford to take on and maybe, and really at your direction, because it's gonna impact that, it's, you know, we go to half-day model where teachers can have a little professional development, a little more time to manage, which, I mean, they're, they're packed up, they're working at their maximum capacity, we got it back. So, certainly something that I'm more than conversation, and this one being one. But that was a conversation that we had there. If you wanna do that, it's gonna take some, I think, it has to be planning and, and, and it's really hard to discuss. And then initially, we talked about virtual learning implementation, updating this kind of test, type of testing, the large tech. So, those were the deep, daily, digital, as well as our teachers that are using right now to support the Mr. Grant and Mrs. Freehouse. So, those are the new ideas we discussed, always there on standing moments. And we also quickly have other questions, that's up here.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Any public comment on that? Okay, seeing none. Uh, extracurricular committee report?
Uh, yes, we just made the earlier statement and talked about sports attendance policy changes, so just briefly, and covered the fall sports update and the gods, he's completed, they had an excellent year, 14-1. Soccer teams are playing, and playing well. Girls have two losses so far, and the boys, I think it's one loss or one tie. So, that they're both going well, and football teams starting 2-1. Talked about the NFHS campus that we're going to put in place, apparently they never really arrived. And by the time they got here now, they would, they wouldn't serve much purpose for the outdoor events, so contracts being canceled. Talked about the pool, the swimming team, probably where you're looking for a new pool, we've kicked out the rest of the line that we used. So, we're looking at other options, uh, we've also started to look at in addition to their wives, uh, university's all right, and possibly did look at other means, but what options we have. Swim team now has over 20 kids, and believe a recommendation for a assistant coach to come forward to handle the number of kids and grow up participation. And the last item that we talked about was the turf, the field. The turf needs to replace in summer, like, it's starting on the process for getting our team to get in front of it, sort of, in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, any board comment on any of that? Any, um, public comment?
I've got the money, um, set aside already for the deals that we do.
For the turf, I believe that's gonna carry this meeting.
Yeah.
I know we kept pushing it back, pushing it back, because we have the money, I believe you have it.
Right.
You're good.
Right, yeah. I see, I see a nod from Mrs. Haynes. I, I always have to double check. Moving on to, uh, facilities and transportation.
Yeah, we met tonight, um, there was a children issue in the high school that last meeting was estimated, you know, over $100,000 issue. They had another company come in, reevaluated, it's more intent to repair potential safety after money. Hopefully, it had a full, more information, we have an update that. There was discussion this evening about the niche deal over in Burksboro. There's some need for some work over there, it's convincing, it's backed up. Rates on the field, takes some other rates, uh, whether or not we're continuing mowing the grass, which we obviously are going to continue to share, potentially different than that. So, um, there should be additional discussion, I imagine, I'll bring to the board. District storage was brought up, there's a lot of stuff in the basements and all these buildings, so there's gonna be an inventory. I was trying to take it, we're worried what's what. Try to organize what we have and actually see what we have in some of the buildings. Current foundations, internal audit. The, um, contracted services is going very well. The new FMX system that he put in is working great. Feels like potentially have one of our first reports. It's gonna give us where we're at, what we spent, it's forward-thinking in terms of being able to maintain the building properly. And he's currently exploring the LED light replacement options that are available, so as we can order, we need replacements. So, there'll be a report for that, so hopefully not the best one to play if we had to make a vote on. Transportation, we're still struggling with the new system. Infoginder, um, basically communicates transportation information back to the buildings, so they have a better, much better idea of who's where or where the bus is at. And the transfinder software still has some minor issues, but much better. And they have it now talking within the campus, so that was a big plus. So, hopefully, we'll be able to reduce the amount of time they have to deal with that. They did bring up capacity issues, something we need to really think about in terms of the buses out there. What capacity they're at right now, it takes about six to eight weeks to load a bus. And there's about 10%, I think, that more students choose to come to school and need a bus driving. And it's possible about, what about maybe some holding or some different things in terms of being able to find out, um, our parents gonna be able to maybe give us better information remarks to, do you need that safety in the bus or not, so they can take a look at that whole structure a little better. So, it was good evening.
Any, uh, any comments or questions from the board for Mr. Strobel? Any comment from the public? Moving on to finance, Mr. Miller?
We did not have a fight to begin last.
Oh, that's right. And the next, so the next meeting is, uh, the 26th, two, two weeks from today. Okay. Any public comment on that? Moving on to policy, Mr. Scott?
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, we, we had the chance to talk about two different policies this evening. And Rob, if it's fair, I say this, it's just that we, we looked at title of one parent and family engagement policy. We just reviewed it, um, it's an active policy, no change for made to it. Rob, right?
Yes, that's correct, that's a bandage that we're, that we're seeing.
Sure, just wanna make sure I'm saying that right. Then we, um, we, our big policy, which took up actually the rest of the meeting, was regarding use of school facilities, that I guess is policy 707. And basically, what that comes down to is just talking about different categories that we allow, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but, uh, different groups that have used our buildings, gyms, schools in the past. And due to COVID, we made some changes to the policy, at least to say fairly during this, during this strange time. Basically, we're only gonna allow, I'll sum it up, we're only gonna allow the local community, basically our children, to continue to use that through AMV basketball, laser mat. We decided also, again, Rob, you correctly were wrong here, but, uh, we're not gonna allow usage of middle school and high school. We're gonna be just looking at River Rock and all the elementary programs because of the tight schedules that they, that are up here. We're gonna request that the clubs put together on their own, we're not gonna police this, but there are individual health and safety plans in accordance for the state CDC policies. I think the only other thing was, it came up, if I'm gonna say this right, was that if we do have an issue, if these programs do have an issue, first of all, they have to, uh, keep a track of attendance. So, for each of these sporting events, whether it's the coach and the six kids that play, they need to have a record of that. But then, ultimately, which we also did, did discuss, would be that, um, at the end of that, if we did have a COVID case, that they have to report it back to the, uh, back to you, Rob, or the school. And that way, we can, we can look at tracking who's used the gym. We use this as an example, if they use the gym on a Tuesday, we may not know until Thursday, that, that this way, at least the school can go look at the groups who use the same gym during that time. I think I made it long enough. My next meeting is on, uh, November 9th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Let me, let me just ask one quick question of Mr. Hurley. Is that 707 policy that we want to make edits to, is that gonna move to first readings?
Yeah, we're gonna put that, because it's a COVID policy, we're gonna put it on the voting meetings.
That's what I figured.
Go on a way through, um, we're now to, more.
Oh, to skip the first reading, just put it in second reading, okay.
Yeah, for COVID, for, normally for new board members, you have to go through a first reading, second reading on all policies. But, uh, Governor, they passed legislation that allows us to COVID to, um, just immediately put them through, you know, because they're more complex.
Okay.
I just, might go back to the precision meeting, clarify that we do remind you, middle school and high schools, if there's a case, then they could impact high school and middle school.
Right, right.
Just for those who want.
Yeah, that's an important point. Any, um, so after that clarification, do any, any board members have any other questions for Mr. Scott or Mr. Hurley about the policies discussed? Any public comment? I swear, we're almost done. Technology committee, Mr. Strobel?
As we met since September 28th, we discussed, uh, the game is going well, no issues, all parents and students have access to it. And at the time of the meeting, about two-thirds of parents and users, there was next thing for them was to set up the online registration and more paper registrations next year, hopefully, so looking forward to that. The Tel Communications was a whole, uh, there was something at the loading box or somewhere, and so that installation started again. I believe elevators, some of the remote pieces were going first, and phones would be second. the remote pieces were going first, and the phone would be second. The internet services, uh, there's RFP, there's no update, um, there'll be a hot code review available, um, so, next month, uh, our provider is, um, BYU, so, but they're still, um, putting out for that, um, waiting for those to come in. COVID, uh, COVID Velvex Act, drawback, uh, delay last month, but it's working now for all employees, uh, at the time of the meeting, and that's for the students, and eventually hopefully for all visitors, um, and it's already set up for an AD automatic alert, which is kind of, you know, make event, that's cool. And eventually we'll be able to survey students at home, hopefully. The other piece was, uh, digital pass or equipment, and history group report, that goes Dr. Cooper's report, time in the meeting of one hundred and three, employed of one hundred and twenty-five male, um, Tracy Garyhouse has been doing some training, apparently very well, uh, understanding, uh, really echo Dr. Cooper's statement there, is that a lot of new ideas coming from the teachers to make the experience better, uh, for everybody involved, including students. Time, um, the Discovery Education usage was updated at, um, time of one hundred and one students and one hundred and thirty-nine teachers, which is very pleased, but, uh, sorry.
Any, um... Any board members have any, um, questions for, um, Mr. Strobel on technology? Do you have any public comments? All right, old business, um, approval of minutes, any discussion on that? Any public comment? We have nothing under new business, um, any presentation by the public on issues not on the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.
We have a small text or something?
I know.